Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our evening city council meeting. Glad, we always love it when the room is nice and full. Of course, after a couple of proclamations of the Tim Reese and Tammy.
We're out of here.
I would ask that our friends, as I look out and see Carol Westfall and, oh gosh, who else is here? Ed Smith, Dennis Cordes, and whom I miss in Mary?
Sherm Backs.
Sherm Backs? Where's Sherm? Oh, there he is. Hi, Sherm. How you doing?
I'm well.
And Sunny Goode, would you guys collectively be so kind as to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance after we have a moment of silent reflection? Now we'll defer to our armed services veterans.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible where liberty and justice are all.
As the council knows well, at the outset, I should note this is going to be a really quick meeting tonight because the two on-leash guys, Skinner and Thomas aren't here, so we'll probably be out in about a half an hour. But one of the things that I get to do as mayor is to recognize folks. And we have three different individuals or groups that we want to specially recognize tonight. And one of our best chums of all time, who I cannot believe that it's coming up 19 years next month that we lost Binky Poundstone, but that's how long it has been. A few years after her death, her family originated, started this great annual scholarship. And this, I believe, I think were up to 12. Doesn't that sound right about, Amy? Yeah. So I would ask that Jared Holland join me up front. Jared, much better looking guy than your old man. This is a proclamation, Jared, and it's all about you. Whereas Elizabeth J. Binky Poundstone served the city of Buchanan for 37 years in several capacities, including as a member of the city council, the longtime city recorder and treasurer, and mayor. And whereas Mrs. Poundstone died while serving as our city's mayor on September 7, 2000, leaving a rich and selfless legacy of devoted public service to our city and further to the youth of our Buchanan Upsher community. And whereas Mrs. Poundstone's family in 2008 proposed to the city council that a family-funded scholarship be established with $500 to be awarded in August of each year in memory of Mrs. Poundstone to a deserving student seeking to attend college whose parent or other guardian or family member is or had been an employee of the city of Buchanan or which employee in their own right is seeking to further their own education through college attendance. And whereas the city council considered and approved the reward, the award of the Poundstone Family Scholarship Proposal during its regularly convened meeting of July 3, 2008, agreeing to the city's participation in the annual scholarship application, review, and selection process. And whereas as a consequence of that process that included the review and selection committee's consideration of several very well-qualified applicants, the committee has determined that the 12th recipient of the annual Elizabeth J. Binky Poundstone Memorial Scholarship shall be Jared Tanner Holland of Buchanan, being the son of city engineer J. Holland and his mother Beth Holland. And whereas the Poundstone family and the entire city of Buchanan family desire to formally recognize Jared Tanner Holland and wish him the very best of luck as he continues his studies this fall as a junior majoring in civil engineering at Western University in Morgantown. See, there's some hot topics about this junior thing because you're technically a senior, but you're a junior engineering major. Is that right?
Yes.
So I technically got it correct. That's good. That's good. Now therefore, I as mayor of the city of Buchanan pursuant to the power and authority duly vested in me do hereby proclaim the 12th recipient of the annual Elizabeth J. Binky Poundstone Memorial Scholarship to be Jared Tanner Holland. Mr. Holland further shall be recognized in perpetuity as the recipient of this prestigious award through the inscription of his name upon a placard to be displayed in the main floor of Buchanan City Hall along with all past and future Poundstone Memorial Scholarship recipients, given under my hand and the official seal of the city of Buchanan. This is first day. We thought you were going to be here two weeks ago. Of August 2019. Ladies and gentlemen, join me in greeting our 12 Poundstones. It's not worth coming out if you don't get a check. So there you go. We can both hold that together. We're going to move this way. Stan Rexrode will kind of be in the picture, I tell you. Here comes Callie for our city website. You're going to be a highly famous man. I mean, yeah. Congratulations, and have a great junior slash senior year at WZ. Okay, this next one's a little more involved. And I'm going to, in no small part, defer just a second to Mary Albaugh. But I would tell you that we are very proud of our American Legion baseball team. And we are always very proud of our veterans of the armed services. And we're very blessed to have a very active American Legion chapter. It's post seven, right? And I always forget Larry Brown's, is it 4334? I always forget the number.
3663.
36, okay. Well, Larry will punch me the next time he sees me. Both VFW and American Legion posts are very, very active. So the thing is, Mary asked me a couple of, three weeks ago, she was so pleased with the last couple of years of participation by the American Legion baseball team players in embracing our veterans, inviting them to the games, recognizing them at least before the home games, marching in the last year or two's worth of Veterans Day parades. You guys have all done that, right? So we've hoaxed up a proclamation. And we'd like to have not only the team that's here, and I've got a copy of a proclamation for everyone, so Coach, we'll give those to you to disseminate to those who couldn't be here. But I'm going to ask Kevin Boering, who's their coach, and all of the players. And then we'll circle around here and get the veterans in the photo up too while I read this proclamation. So please come forward. Make sure I get the right one. That's the one. All right. Come on up, guys. I think this is it. And Mary, we need to get you in this picture too. And Dennis, come on up. And Sherm, come on up, Sherm. And Carol, Joe. Let's get everybody in the picture. Cali and Amanda and Katie are all going out to the parking lot because this is a big group.
You're not going to be able to thin that, are you?
All right, here we go.
Oh, I got this.
Are we ready? Whereas, American Legion baseball has been played since 1926 with millions of U.S. youths having participated in the 94 seasons of league play, purposed at instilling the importance of sportsmanship, good health, and active citizenship. And whereas some of the greatest Major League Baseball players were formerly American Legion players, including, let's see how many these guys have. Bob Thiller, Yogi Berra, Ted Williams, Frank Robinson, Roy Campanella, Greg Maddux, Chipper Jones, Albert Coolz, Ryan Sandberg, Dusty Baker, and Justin Verlander, with Babe Ruth, no less, having served for several years as Director of Operations. And whereas the 2019 Buchanan American Legion baseball team, sponsored by Buchanan's own Frank Bartlett Post Number Seven coached by Kevin Boering, recently completed their season during which our Buchanan team regularly recognized our Buchanan Upsher community's veterans. And whereas the Buchanan American Legion baseball players further appeared in last year's Veterans Day parade, immediately behind the members of our American Legion and VFW Post members, demonstrating excellent patriotism and respect for our service veterans. And whereas our entire Buchanan Upsher community is very proud of our American Legion baseball team, including members Alex Hecht, Ryan Smith, Logan Bailey, Nick Caleb Boering, Andrew Harron, Tim Phillips, Cole Hoover, Elijah Arbogast, Casey Hamner, Logan Whitehair, Jonathan Warner, Trey Lee, Josh Riffle, Wesley Rosenkratz, Andrew Karakow, Ryan Strater, Brady Hirst, Zachary White, Isaac Lane, Hunter Stone, Johnny Haddix, Jay Burnside, and Benjamin Tenny. And whereas our American Legion baseball team's future is very bright, and Post Number Seven along with our city of Buchanan wishes to congratulate all players for exhibiting the utmost respect and admiration for our community's service veterans. Now therefore, I as mayor of the city of Buchanan pursuant to the power and authority duly vested in me do hereby proclaim Friday, August 16, 2019, to be Frank Bartlett American Legion Post Number Seven Baseball Team Day throughout our city of Buchanan. I further urge all of our residents to greet and congratulate all members of our American Legion baseball team, along with their families, friends, our entire city council, and all members of our city government family during our most special day, given under my hand and the official seal, see, right there it is, of the city of Buchanan this 15th day of August 2019 and is signed by me as mayor. So Coach, you want to swing over here and I'll present this to you.
If we could get these guys to step up a little bit, we'll get the other gentleman in behind.
We've got copies for, originals for everybody, not copies, originals. Now we have a photo op.
Hang on a second, Mayor. Everybody move away from the desk a little bit and we'll see if we can see heads between shoulders.
Randy's a professional.
Yes. So here, I need you guys all to come forward. Come forward. All the gentlemen go in the back.
Katie's got to go out to the parking lot.
Keep going. All the way around, all the way through. They'll make room for you.
Meanwhile, Coach Boering says this guy's been holding my hand for an extremely uncomfortable period of time.
Now, the key is, if you can look out between shoulders, keep going over there a little bit further. You can make it. You and Eric, everybody.
Are we good, ladies?
Is that good?
That looks pretty good. I can't see one veteran.
You stand right here, you can.
That's a little bit better. Now I can't see the one in the blue shirt.
Somebody wanted to.
You all just look at the cameras, they're taking personal photographs.
Okay. Look here first.
We're looking at Randy, she's taking charge. And now Katie on the chair. And Cali on the other chair. Are we good? Oh, one more? She's farming out the phones. Good. This is for you. You're supposed to be one with a frame, but you've got it. Good. That's for the Legion. And Mary Albaugh will distribute every player and give you the rest, so if you can give them the chance you could.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, sure. Thank you. Well, how about one more round of applause?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary.
Sure, you said you were going to give me a photo.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis.
Thank you.
I didn't want to tilt it.
I moved it, I had my photo winner.
Thank you guys for coming out.
Mary Albaugh says they're fine young men, I'm buying.
They are.
Carrie.
Carrie, on. All right, one more proclamation. You know, it's been almost a year. We're sneaking up Fast and Furious on Buchanan exemplary service testimonial. Stan's hiding over there in the corner, he doesn't like it. His wife started to leave with the better-looking baseball players. He's like, I'm going to follow the good rookie guys.
I'm over there.
Yeah. Yes, sir. Let me read this. Whereas the council of the city of Buchanan resolved during its regular meeting of October 18, 2018, to honor residents of our Buchanan Upsher community who perform extraordinary service while embracing the kind and giving spirit of volunteerism. And whereas Buchanan has long championed community service and has recognized persons who have given selflessly for the benefit of our city's fire department, Stockard Youth and Community Center, and police department, but had not until recently formally recognized others who generally perform many other acts of service and kindness. And whereas with the 2018 establishment of our Buchanan Volunteer Center, the city deemed it to be reasonable and appropriate to henceforth recognize our community's most beautiful volunteers. The previous honorees of the Buchanan exemplary service testimonial, best award being Amanda Hayes, Zachary Mutchler, Robin Keough, Shirley Tinney, Bill Nicholson, Dr. Joseph Reed, Dr. Paul Richter, April Keating, Brad and Kim Linsicum, and Dr. Kathy Gregg. Now therefore, I as mayor of the city of Buchanan pursuant to the power and authority duly vested in me do hereby proclaim as our city's 11th recipient of our best award for August of 2019 to be Stanley Rexrode. Stan Rexrode has long been an important and regular volunteer and participant in all Create Buchanan activities. Mr. Rexrode is one of the most visible volunteers at the enormously popular Festival Fridays, which are sponsored by Create Buchanan and conducted in our Jawbone Park during Friday afternoons and evenings from Memorial Day through Labor Day weekends. Whenever there is an elimination dinner involving Create Buchanan or C.J. Maggie's, Stan Rexrode is one of the first people to come volunteer his time for the many philanthropic causes of our BU community. Stan is a silent elder whose actions are louder than words. Mr. Rexrode supports all things community. Simply stated, Stan Rexrode has helped us all and our BU community to be better and happier in many ways. I direct the establishment of our city's new best bench and installation of a permanent placard in Jawbone Park to forever honor and recognize Stan Rexrode and all past and future honorees of our city's best award. I further urge all residents to join our city's most honored guests, Stan Rexrode, his wife Charmaine, his friends and admirers, and me, along with all members of our city government family during a public ceremony to be conducted at 7:00 PM on Thursday, August 15, 2019, as we honor our city's 11th recipient of our best award. We all wish Mr. Rexrode the best as he continues to work hard for our BU community. May every resident be mindful of the importance of community service and giving of oneself and be inspired to give selflessly for the benefit of others as we pay tribute to the many substantial contributions of our exceptional volunteers, including the 11th recipient of our city's best award, Mr. Stan Rexrode. It's given under my hand, right there's the official seal, Stan. Yeah, isn't that something? Of the city of Buchanan this 15th day of August 2019. Young man, we're very proud of all you.
It's an honor to get this from the mayor of the year.
Oh, well said.
It's about the place, not the person. Proudly display that, sir.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
It's not real, Bill. It's not real, Bill.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Steve.
Congratulations, Stan.
Take care.
Good to see you.
You too. Bye-bye.
Congratulations, everybody.
See, I told you the group would thin out fast. Our next guests represent the daughters of the American Revolution. And I think we have tonight from the Elizabeth Zane chapter, Georgette Ward, Dolores Wilson, Loretta Dawson, and Carolyn Crozier. So do you have a spokesperson for us to this evening? All right, we'll be glad to hear from you.
Hi, I'm Georgette. We need you to come up here.
Mary?
I didn't do it. We need you to do it.
They won't have to vote on it, really.
I've already done that.
See, Elizabeth Zane chapter of the D.A.R. would like to recognize Mary Albaugh as a recipient of Women in American History Award for Service to our Country, Patriotism, Dedication, and Commitment to the City of Buchanan and the Youth of Upsher County. We have a certificate for you.
I got a medal?
And a medal.
Hey, Dave. Wait a minute. Cheese. Don't take off the tammy.
Yeah, don't take off the, I'm done.
Oh, that's right.
She's taking them for us.
Cali's got some photos to put on our website. Are you getting it?
It's still clicking.
Okay. Couple more.
My goodness.
Sorry.
Last one.
Geez.
Are you done, Tim?
You're done?
I just got a text message from Robert N. Skinner III. Congratulations, Mary. Congratulations, Mary. Mr. Skinner is in Fayetteville. His services are very good, he was called. Okay. And thanks to the veterans for coming tonight, supporting us. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, fellas. Appreciate you very much.
Eat a hot, oh, way home.
Last guest we have this evening to address Council, Tammy Rigger, would like to address the Council on the Effem Chamber of North Spring Street. Tammy, it's all yours.
We just wanted to mention, and we have the city council look at it, we've noticed the Chamber of Visitors, we're constantly walking from Maine to the North Spring Street lot. There's some trash being dumped on the sidewalks in that area. It's been there for, I know, all of this week. I'm not sure about last weekend. It's becoming an issue. So maybe if we could send out a notice to those residents living in those apartments. And the other thing was, we had some visitors in the area. They were down at the parking lots on North Spring Street trying desperately to get under the garbage bag on the kiosk to figure out how to pay for their parking. It just so happened, I happened to be walking down that way to leave for a meeting and caught them, and I was like, no, it's free parking, but...
The kiosk is scheduled for removal.
Okay.
Or not the kiosk, but the electronic element of it, it's still there, isn't that right, Amy?
Yeah, the whole element will be removed, the whole machine will be removed.
And we'll replace it with appropriate signs that explains the free parking situation. And the other thing I would tell you, Tammy, is we have in the queue, and Jerry could speak to it better than I, that we have, after we do the southern laterals to Main Street, we're going to work on the northern laterals. And there will be new sidewalks and freshly paved streets after we do some storm sewer work. We've been promising folks down on North Canal that for a couple of years now. We're getting closer to being able to do those projects. So we don't want to dress up just Main Street, we want the lateral streets to look nice also. We'll try to get the attention. There's also, somebody that lives downtown has a dog that they regularly walk, and they don't care where that dog goes.
Wasn't issue this morning also?
And the pieces that are on the street are like large fan computer equipment, so they
are a hazard.
Yeah. Well, if somebody can identify the people that have the dog, I will make it a personal mission to see that that activity is abated, that they have the pooper-scooper bags like the rest of us, right?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Do we have any, anybody else wants to address the council? Mr. Cozett, do you want to sing your favorite song tonight?
No, I'm passing.
Thank you.
Takes us to Department and Board reports. First up is our Information Coordinator and Grant Writer, Cali Crandall-Santos. Cali, how's it going?
Great. I've got the report in the packet, and the first page is all the social media and website and press updates. A little longer than usual because I did have, you know, made up for not being here last night too, so it goes back a little longer than it typically does. Some of the posts on Facebook that got the most shares were our best awardee Kathy Gregg, and of course, the Dickens Ford gift, which was wonderful, $25,000 to Stockard Youth and Community Center. Hazel Davidson's 101st birthday, a lot of people really appreciated getting to see her celebrate that. Also, of course, our farewells to Rob Barber, and everyone was excited to see him going, and everyone just really appreciated some flowers so much. Kind of along that note today, and also press-related, did another video shoot with Mike Puff, I live in DDP for the Environment Matters show, this time focusing on the pollinator gardens. He wanted to come back up. He's been here before, of course, but never when the pollinator were really blooming, those wildflower plots. So we went to the Larnedjaba, we also went to the Riverwalk, and we went to the Community Orchard, which has grapes and apples right now, so if anyone's interested. It's looking great, and wildflowers look wonderful as well. So I imagine that'll be out in a week or two, and we'll be able to share that, and it'll be another way to say, hey, look how beautiful Buchanan is. So that's mainly it for P R E. I won't go through the whole list, but you see, there's a pretty long list that's been out on Facebook and on the website. So everything, pretty typical, you see the little dip where I was on vacation, so there's a little dip there, or we didn't have quite as much going up on the website, but I did have the Dickens gift that Lisa knew in advance that was going to happen, so that was scheduled to go out, and that got some use as well. And then in the grant world, on Monday, Gabby Sager is going to be starting with a Buchanan Volunteer Center Coordinator position, so we're looking forward to welcoming her. And that was through the grant funding through the Volunteer West Virginia Grant that we received a couple of years ago, and then it was reestablished this year. And I've been working with Jay on the DHHR Source Water Protection Grant application, rounding up some support letters for that. Partners. And still working on the, looking at the Junior Events Program with the COPS grant and researching that State Farm insurance possibility for Stockard. All of those lists, I think you're going to go through later, the fall, late summer, fall events.
Yeah.
And so I did get, those are all up on that Google Calendar now, that's on the full page as well as in the monthly calendar section of the website, so those have all been added. And of course, the ones that are coming up soonest are Buchanan River Fest on the 31st of August, and then Truck Fest and Children's Fest on September 13th and 14th. And I think there's more than that, I think I'm missing, there's a whole bunch of things that are happening on the 7th. So just definitely go and check out that calendar and that full list that's in the packet. Oh, and this is what's up on the LED about the Truck and Children's Festival.
Questions for Cali? Welcome back. We actually have a slideshow on you. You tripped our dance, I heard it was amazing.
It was, it was great. Wanted to share some photos for sure. Haven't done that yet. Narrowed down, we just shared family, it's kind of family, my parents and my brother and his fiance went, so we have a group Google Drive photo album, and I think there's a few hundred photos in there, so I'm trying to narrow it down a little bit for you guys.
Be anxious to see them.
And I've been working with Jay on the D H H R Source Water Protection Grant application, and rounding up some support letters for that. And still working on the, looking at the Junior Events Program with the COPS Grant, and researching that State Farm Insurance possibility for Stocker. All of those lists, I think you're going to go through later, the fall, late summer, fall events.
Yeah.
And so I did get, those are all up on that Google Calendar now, that's on the full page, as well as in the monthly calendar section of the website, so those have all been added. And of course, the ones that are coming up soonest are Buchanan River Fest on the 31st of August, and then Truck Fest, and Children's Fest on September 13th and 14th, and I think there's more than that, I think I'm missing, there's a whole bunch of things that are happening on the 7th. So just definitely go and check out that calendar and that full list that's in the packet. Oh, and this is what's up on the LED about the Truck Fest and Children's Festival.
Questions for Kelly? Welcome back. We should have a slideshow on you. You tripped our event, I heard it was amazing.
It was, it was great. Wanted to share some photos for sure. Haven't done that yet. Narrowed down, we just shared family, it's kind of family, my parents and my brother and his fiance went, so we have a group Google Drive photo album, and I think there's a few hundred photos in there, so I'm trying to narrow it down a little bit for you guys.
Be anxious to see them. All right, glad you're back. Okay, next up is our Stocker Youth and Community Center Director, Deborah Boffin.
Just to give you an overview of what's been going on, our last day of summer camp was August the 2nd. Camp looked very well, lots of activities and field trips. On those days, we had 16 campers in attendance. After-school began yesterday, we already are at maximum capacity and have a waitlist. Drill team has started back last Thursday. They already have a parade scheduled in Elkins on Monday. They were invited to come, otherwise they probably wouldn't, since they're just getting back in the groove, but they've been invited to parade already. Girl Talk will be back on September the 9th, and that's our girls, our middle school girls mentoring group that meets every Monday. As Kelly shared, Children's Festival will be September 14th, Truck Fest, and we're expecting to have a lot of participants and activities for the kids, some of the community agencies, the high school clubs, and some of the Virginia Westland organizations will be helping us out. For Fall Fest, we're going to do an activity in the morning, and possibly one at Jumbo in the evening before the bands start. We're narrowing down, narrowing down what activity we're going to do, but it's probably going to be the Hey Dive, and we're going to make sword pops this afternoon, a competing that we talked about earlier. Other things going on, had a staff meeting, yep, on Tuesday, and we set our event calendar, and it will be going out in our newsletter, hopefully by the end of the month to all the schools, and I'll get it to Kelly to post as well. We're also going to the Wildcat Fair to promote our programs with the Westland College students, and hopefully recruit some volunteers for our activities and for after-school. And one other thing I would like to share, and you all should be hearing about this later in the meeting, I believe, about the PALS program. And it's a pilot program, for you that don't know, it's something new that's coming along. And what PALS stands for is Personalized Alternative Learning School, and it's a classroom for children who have trouble in a day-to-day classroom routine, so this, and most of the children are homebound. So this gets them back into a classroom, and hopefully will segue into a regular classroom. But this is a program that Stocker has the opportunity to have in their, in our facility, and they have a teacher and an aide that will be responsible for the children, and it'll be a non-traditional type classroom. And they will also have an opportunity to see what Stocker's all about, and maybe participate in some of the program, in our programs that they may not have known about since they've been homebound. And also, students from the high school that are needing credit recovery so they can graduate, this program would help them as well. And there's two other classrooms in the county besides us that are one that marks the same goals of getting the kids educated and back into a classroom situation. And most of the kids, not all of them, they're referred, they have like a doctor in the referral because they aren't homebound. Gets them back into classroom setting and socialization and things that go wrong against me. But anyway, that, I think the mayor might have a letter of understanding or something.
We're going to take that up under strategic.
And our youth involvement hours for July is 13,500 and more hours.
Since that's about the amount that we end up with every month, as you process that, that's 150, 160,000 youth hours a year. If you want to divide that by 24, that'd give you a number, and it's, it's an anomalous amount of time that our youth expended, our youth spend.
Well, and the children that have been coming to this program, Mrs. Glenn, who is the teacher, she has been giving the kids tours, but they have never been there before, and they didn't really even know about, because they had been homebound, they haven't been in the school system. And they'd heard about it, but they didn't know actually what we did there. So they're really excited. They're going to be using the gym too, and she calls them brain breaks, so they get a break to go to the gym or whatever, outside.
Always pleased to partner with our school system.
Did, did one program you mentioned, was it Girls Talk?
Yeah.
That's part of the national program, right?
Uh, yes, I believe it is. But, and it's, they do it every Monday at 6:00. They took the summer off, but now they're getting back in the group.
Questions for Deborah? Thank you very much. Okay, folks, moving right along. Next up is Jerry Arnold, our Public Works Director. How's it going, everybody?
Very good, thank you, Mayor. Director of the Port, my fellow which I've been working with, you know, Spring Street as well as on the D O E office side of Park. Water Department worked the Leaky A Plus Rental Room and Clear Brush and Man. That's part of the upcoming inspection that will have the Army Corps on the project over there at North Buchanan. Sewer Department, Crew 1 completed the Westview exit project, and now working on a small extension off of Travis Foster's property out in Russian Ford also. Crew 2 cleared the right-of-way for the C J Mark Sew Line Extension on Russian Ford. Plant crews been repairing doors, making preparation for the new U V units. The Street Department, the crew has completed clearing brush for the Royal Road Banks for the Army Corps inspection on August 19th. Crew's installed the 15 mile an hour speed limit signs on Camden between me and Walpole Lane, so that, that has changed, just to make everyone aware. And also, has installed the one-way signs in Crater's Alley. We will be installing the new parking signs on College Avenue, Barber, Fayette, O'Connell Streets, on those end blocks towards the college, and continue working on South Spring Street code. Optimistic that we'll be able to do the base white top on Spring Street next week, so at least that will, we'll be able to get the base down and complete the crosswalk section. Like I said, I'm hoping, optimistic that next week we can get that accomplished. Engineering, the A C P Water System Improvement Project, all the project construction activities except for the installation of a hoodling channel ditch, a value of about $1,200 that's been completed. And those water storage tank inspections, Fort Tech will begin those inspections on September 9th, and complete the inspections by September 14th, and that's all I have. Mayor, was there questions?
Questions for Jerry Arnold? To all the guys, we appreciate your good work.
Will do. Thank you.
Next up is our Per Strang's holder, Ambie Jenkins. Says we still, we can carry on for another one.
Okay, so I'm going to do your balances for your enterprise accounts at the end of July. Waste Collection Board, end of July, with $591,132 in their money market, checking received, remains at $57,000 by 46. Water Board had $274,082. The Atlantic Coast Pipeline Fund remaining was $231,069. The CDs in that fund are $959,000. The Sanitary Board, end of July, was $654,043 with CDs of $191,260. The Board had directed me last month to open another CD to keep building on the reserve account for $100,000, and I did that in August. Now, the interest rate we got with that was 2.48%. And I also opened up the fire truck savings account in August for $38,210. That was from the cell, from former fire truck and from donation. And that savings account's 0.4%. The Consolidated Public Works Board had $131,239, and their cemetery CD is still at $230,348. And on a side note, they've mentioned the Truck Fest. We also received a donation from the Enterprise Vehicle Leasing Program for Truck Fest for $1,000. That's the same company we use for our vehicle leasing program.
If you'll remind me, I'll do a thank you letter to them.
Okay. Jerry and I have met a couple times with the company that's interested in supplying our employees' uniforms, as well as some facility services. We're comparing their quotes with what we have from our current provider, and we'll let you know if we think we're going to get any savings out of that by switching. The first meeting of the Technology Committee was held August the 6th. The first meeting was basically to go over all of the, how the city structures, computer certified network structure is laid out, and the internet that we currently have, and then we're beginning to review the micrologic proposal. The next committee meeting will be in September. Kelly mentioned Gabriella Sager, we'll start work with as volunteer coordinator. We'll introduce you, her to you, City Council in September. I'm currently making that application to the State Tax Department for a Raffle License to Kentucky, the Elimination Dinner for the Stocker Youth Centers Capital Campaign that's going to be held November the 8th at the Event Center. And on bills that you're going to look at to be approved later, the ones that stand up, $10,425 for chain link fence North Buchanan Park, and also $3,000 for security cameras. So that's the end of that North Buchanan River Park project, and some much-needed fencing and security cameras will be set up over there. $2,400 in blacktop for the North Buchanan Park as well. $2,400 to rent a hoodling lift for the Street Department. Safety complex had the Lennox AC unit installed for $3,000. Actual night out expenses was $2,800. P T S, which that's Police Department's software, annual maintenance, $7,600, and then blacktop for utility cuts was $2,000.
Questions for Ambie? Thanks, Ambie. Appreciate you, as always, and our entire staff, I find. Next up is Police Chief Matt Gregory, chief, how's it going?
Good.
Anybody guys been in the safety down there?
Yes, sir. Very busy on multiple fronts, just a few things to report to council, mainly centered around our community policing efforts. Just a quick report on National Night Out, Ambie just mentioned it was a major success this year, and this is thanks in large part to the gracious donations that we received from Buchanan Walmart and the Buchanan Rotary. Really enabled us to make a very nice event out of the evening, have a lot of good door prizes that we offer the community. It's all about 700 people this year, which is very phenomenal, so many thanks go out to those organizations, and many of the others that also assist us in having tables with information at the event as well. Beyond this, we have been participating in a large number of community policing endeavors, everything from safety presentations to drug panels and discussions, substance abuse presentations specifically for the Upsher County Head of Guard. Present a seminar for their faculty and staff, the free service training just last week. We will be hosting the R A's from Westland College next Friday as they begin to return back to the campus and prepare to move in. This is an annual tradition for a number of years, we provide the training for them as well, and these members, so look forward to that. And then finally, on August 27th, we had a meeting with Jay Consulting House and other law enforcement agencies to continue our dialogue in regards to planning for school emergencies. And this is just an extension of the tabletop exercises, the full-scale exercises that we've been involved in for a number of years now. We're discontinuing this with the next phase. And one thing that I hope to work, these exercises into our old hazard training as well, with player accreditation, so there's going to be some nice psychoses there as well, so that's all I have, Mayor, unless there's questions.
Questions for Chief Gregory? Tell all of our guys and our gal to be safe. I was teasing Angel earlier, but, hey, guys, how's it going? And gal, yeah, always gotta remember. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Next up, the City Attorney, Tom O'Neil, Tom?
Thank you. On this matter, I prefer I have the number Biden's under strategic.
Okay. Well, we'll let you do your bit then, Tom. Of course, Bob, it's an information, you got a bunch of stuff in your packet. Jimmy Tenka's birthday is next Tuesday, and we're going to celebrate that in Jumbo Park because of the trom bonus for the rock band in Chicago. There's a letter of invitation to Jimmy, we're still trying to actually get him to Buchanan. There's an article about some old guy winning an award. A thank you letter to President...
I could interject here for just a second. I was with some old guy when he got an award, the Mayor of the Year by the West Virginia Municipal League, and it's not about one person, it's about everyone, we all, we all know that, but I just want to mention that I've known Mayor McCauley for many years prior to getting the position, it's the first time I saw him speechless. So he was very humble.
Did you film it?
It was, no, I was, I was, I was too busy with my mouth hanging up.
He was courteous, too.
Speechless, but, but it was, he was, he was so well-received there. He was talking of over nachos later that evening, I can tell you that. But I just want to recognize it was a privilege to be there with you at the W M L, and it was a pleasure to receive a much deserved award.
Sure glad to hear, so thank you very much.
Back to you.
It's about the place, not any person, so anyway, it's, it's kind of like when Jerry was the Man of the Year two years ago, and Ambie was the Woman of the Year this past year with the Chamber, it's, it's, it's about Buchanan. We're, anytime we get to put Buchanan, we're going to award, that's what it's all about.
Please, Ford said she is very honored to have you as the mayor, and she appreciates everything you work with, what our city does with the hospital and everything, and congratulate you.
Thank you. So there's also a thank you letter to President Steve Williams on his exiting year as lead president, and Huntington hosted just a heck of a, heck of a good conference. It was, you know, I was down there 12 years ago as the city attorney, and I don't know if Steve would want me to say this publicly, but I'll say it. I was afraid to leave my room 12 years ago in downtown Huntington. And now, I was out at midnight getting that last couple of thousand steps in on my foot bit, and you can go for blocks and blocks, and it's just the turnaround in a short period of time that he and his staff have led this renaissance of Huntington is just amazing. I can't say enough about, about Huntington. Okay, there's the timeline, and Tom will probably take that up with us here in just a few minutes, on the 2025 Comprehensive Plan. There's calendar events that I will reference at the very end of the meeting, August to actually about the middle of November. And then there's the proclamation that we had fun with. It was 7:47 a.m., I got a message on Facebook that, oh my God, we forgot to ask you if you could, so we somehow managed to get a proclamation together, and Mrs. Davidson was very sweet and surprised at all of the party stuff.
You have more than just a few to reference in your proclamations.
Yeah, well, this was the first centenarian. They were calling her a centurion, but that's actually a Roman Colonel. Unless she had like a, some sort of lightsaber that I didn't see, she's a centenarian. But we'll probably have a regular club now, because a couple of other folks said, well, my grandma's going to be 100 years. I said, well, well, we're, if you live to be 100 years old, you deserve good moments. Geez, was, I, I'll be happy to see 62. But anyway, consent agenda, would it consist of the approval of our minutes from our last regular meeting of August 1, the approval of our building and wiring permits, the approval of the payment of the general fund bills, there is a zoning form that we're required to make a part... of the general fund bills, there is a zoning form that we're required to make a part of our minutes, and the Washington Alcohol Beverage Control Administration concerning the social bar. And then there's the appointment of the city's rep to the BU Airport Authority. We have a nominee, but they haven't given us the letter yet, so they asked if we could roll that over until our September 5 meeting. So, with the exception of appointing the Airport Authority Board Member, I would entertain a motion that we approve our consent agenda. I have a motion by Mrs. Albaugh.
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Rylands. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing the need for none, we'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. And geez, it really does move quickly, Skinner and Thomas, doesn't it? We're down to these strategic items already. And the first item is ordinance number 437, having to do with employee health insurance. Remember, we've kicked this around in draft form a couple of meetings, had first reading last time. This would be the second and final reading, as Tomlinhill breaks up the place again. Tom, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of Council present to you ordinance number 437 of the City of Buchanan, an ordinance defining certain employee medical and prescription drug insurance benefits for full-time employees of the City of Buchanan, establishing the city's share of employees' health insurance premiums to be paid, establishing the city's share of health insurance premium for full-time employees, spouses, qualifying children, and setting an effective date. This is the second of two readings.
Okay. Mr. O'Neill has complied with our Charter and Statutory Grant by reading the ordinance 437 by caption. I would entertain a motion that we approve this ordinance, recognizing that it would be effectuated in 30 days.
It'll be effective on October 1st.
October 1st, I apologize. I have a motion by Mrs. Albaugh, may I have a second? And a second by Mrs. Buckle. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Ordinance 438.
Thank you.
Having to do with municipal purchasing, first reading, Tom's yours.
The purpose of this ordinance, Mr. Mayor, is to just ensure that our own municipal purchasing practices are fully within the protections of state code. This is kind of a housekeeping ordinance. It does not change any of our current practices. It just codifies within our, within our own municipal code, or, I'm sorry, by municipal ordinance, the practices that are permitted by West Virginia State Code. This is ordinance number 438 of the City of Buchanan, an ordinance providing for the expenditure of public funds for the purpose of material supplies and equipment, requiring competitive bidding under circumstances, and authorizing the use of central purchasing services upon agreement between the City of Buchanan and the West Virginia Department of Administration, and providing for severability and an effective date. This is the first of two readings.
Any questions for Tom on this first reading? We can, we'll take it up again if you react favorably to it tonight at the September 5 meeting. I would entertain a motion that we approve ordinance 438, on the first of two readings. I have a motion by Mr. Rylands, may I have a second to his motion? And a second by Mr. Sanders. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. There's really nothing to report more about the part-time firefighter under home rule. Tom will be working with J.B. to try to come up with something, formalize, that would require an ordinance, and then we've got to take it down to home rule, and then we come back and have another... It's a lot of hoops to jump through, but we did this before with the police stuff, so... Is there anything else you want to add to that?
We have, J.B. and I are working on finalizing a proper job description right now.
So, probably stealing some stuff from our police situation, I would guess. F4 is to set trick-or-treat. It's hard to believe that's sneaking up Fast and Furious, but we're only two and a half months till Halloween. It's the best holiday of the year, of course, yeah. We have, for the past number of years, done trick-or-treat on Halloween. This year, it's on a Thursday, and we usually do 6:00 to 7:30. I'd entertain a motion that we adopt that as our trick-or-treating night for Halloween 2019.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Sanders, may I have a second to his motion?
Second.
And a second by Mr. Rylands, they're both apparently Halloween zealots.
Excellent.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. F5. Tom has drafted an excellent letter agreement with the Upshur County Board of Education to use the room at Stockard for the PALS program that Deborah was discussing with us a little bit ago. So, Tom, do you want to hit the highlights of that for us?
The, the letter agreement just really sets out the conditions under which the Board of Education will have access to the space at Stockard, provides that the, that any personnel there is under the direction, control, and employment and insurance coverage of the Board of Education, that if the Board needs to make any improvements to the space, those are the Board's responsibilities. There's already been discussion, for instance, of bringing a supplemental air conditioner into the space. They will have the ability to create private secure storage in the form of a closet or locker or something that they, they will bring there. And that this initial agreement is only for the term of the 2019, 2020 academic year, but it may be extended or expanded by any time, I would agree.
There's nothing novel about this concept. A number of years, oh, probably going back 10 or so years ago, Board of Education used one of our classrooms as an alternative school classroom, and it was an excellent arrangement. It's my recommendation that the Council adopt this and that I be authorized to sign the letter agreement.
Can I make sure of one, no, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt, but I just want to read one paragraph out of this that will, that will represent kind of the sentiment of the Council in the letter, and just think-
Sure.
Just to get it out there. "The City of Buchanan is pleased to make this space available for the use of the Upshur County Board of Education, and students and community will be all served. The City expresses its appreciation to the Board and its administration and leadership for their collaborative thinking of making use of the Stockard Youth and Community Center as a valuable public resource."
You know, we, we get an annual contribution, $25,000, from the social system, to the Stockard Youth Center, at least we can do. I have a motion by Mrs. Albaugh to authorize me to sign this letter agreement. I have a second to her motion.
Second.
I heard Mr. Rylands first.
He beat me.
Just a millisecond, but he had to. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Man, this is Skinner, Thomas, sure. Subset, subset. Okay, comments and announcements, Mary Albaugh.
Thank you for doing what you do for the community.
Thank you.
For our veterans, for the kids, and I really appreciate that.
Well, I got you. Pam Buckle?
The little kids who live for the soccer teams, in grade school and below, they're looking for coaches, they're desperately need coaches for the under eight. If there's a parent that can come out and do it, or a former soccer player, whatever, we need one for the under eight.
What type of work?
Soccer.
Soccer, soccer.
Soccer team.
They're looking for soccer?
Yep, and they're desperately.
They might contact the Volunteers Center at the college. Maybe, maybe some of the college kids would be looking for a service project or something.
Has that one though?
Yeah. Katie Loudon would be able to help coordinate that.
I also want to congratulate you, Mayor. I wish I was there.
Thank you, Pam.
We missed you.
It was nice.
I might have had some on, too, some.
There might have been a beer involved.
Both people.
It was, it was a nice afternoon. Thank you, ladies. Mr. Adams?
Oh, I'd like to tag on to what Tammy said about some of the sidewalks from North Spring Street up to Main Street. You know, there's, there always just seems to be some issues going down that side of the street there. And so, I don't know what we can do, but, you know, prior to doing new sidewalks and other things, but the, you know, trash on a new sidewalk, a old sidewalk is still trash. So, just probably a little more focused concern about it, and also congratulate you on your big win. I think that's great for Buchanan in general, that once again, they're talking about things going on in Buchanan, so congratulations.
Thank you. There was lots of talk about Buchanan at the municipal league conference, the awards banquet, there were about 500 people there, and I can't tell you how many people came up to me before the recognition. What about your flowers? You going to keep that flower program going, because they, many of them follow us in there, that Rob Barber was leaving our... Well, yeah, absolutely, we're committed to that. Oh, that's good, that's, we love coming up there, eating downtown, Wesleyan and St. Joe's, it's, it's great stuff, terrific stuff. Mr. Skinner, Mr. Thomas, both guys. Mr. Sanders, you're up.
Well, I just, I want to thank City Attorney O'Neill and Councilman Skinner and the Mayor for keeping me kind of straight down at the West Virginia Municipal League. It was an honor to be there. And then Mr. Thomas and Mr. Skinner asked me to take this hour, this extra now, to read this entire comprehensive plan.
Motion to kill Mr. Sanders.
That's all I had. It was a great opportunity to see the Municipal League.
We're making a record here, we're doing another first.
We, we went out together one night for a black sheep burrito, and I need to tell you, it was the greatest burrito I've ever had in my life. It was amazing. It's worth the drive to Huntington just to have, yeah? Black sheep burrito.
Big plate of nachos and all the...
Yeah. I tried to reach in one time to get a nacho, and I got it. Just a couple of things. First, you know, I still think about that terrific video that Ben Davidson did for our water department, and I'm working up a memo that I'm going to send around to all the supervisors. I think, I would love to ultimately have this little video dropdown menu on our website, and that you'd be able to go get a five, six, seven minute video of every single activity that we engage in, department by department, Stockard Youth Center, police, fire, all of our utility boards. I just think it would be a really cool thing to do, so we're gonna, we're gonna work on that.
You know, the syrup plant tour today, I did forget to mention that. Man, those guys, that crew out there is phenomenal, and they did a nice job with the tour today. Great job hosting our meeting, and Buck and Sam and their whole crew out there is top notch.
Fine, fine home in the machine.
Yes, it's incredible. So, I want to thank all of them for their hospitality. It was a great afternoon.
Community calendar events. There's a lot of stuff coming up. It's a happening place. We really are. I have spent about 100 bucks on this biggest cake in the history of the world, that will serve like 200 people. So, we want to pack that park next Tuesday between 5:00 and 6:00. We're working on recruiting trombonists who collectively, hopefully, will be able to actually play the 13-minute rock opus, a ballet for a girl in Buchanan. So, next Tuesday, 5:00 to 6:00, in Jawbone Park. There are three Festival Fridays left, August 16, 23, and 30. August 30 is Wesleyan College Day, so come out and enjoy the last three of those of the season, although CJ's working on partnering with Fall Fest to do a Friday-Saturday thing at the end of September. The City Employee Recognition Picnic is coming up very quickly, two weeks from today, Thursday, August 29th, from 5:00 to 7:30 in Jawbone Park. The Whiskey Shakes are performing. We bring a covered dish if you're a city employee or council member, and we're providing the meats. River Fest is Saturday, August 31, down at the Boat Ramp, all day. I'm reminded that there is a paper shredding by the Solid Waste Authority Saturday, September 7, 9 to 12, at the Crossroads Recycling Center. The trade annual Trader's Alley Block Party is noon till midnight, Saturday, September 7. Patriots Day will be celebrated on Wednesday, September 11, out in front of City Hall. Probably we'd do that about 11:30, I think, that day. Truck Fest, Friday and Saturday, September 13 and 14. Children's Festival, Saturday, September 14. The Hope and Help Assembly, version three, is in Jawbone Park later in the afternoon and evening on Saturday, September 14. Fall Fest is Wednesday through Saturday, September 25 through 28. The Second Annual Community Unity and Kindness Service Day will be Saturday, October 5, between 8:30 and about 3 o'clock, registration in Jawbone Park. The Buchanan Community Theater will perform Dracula in our Colonial Theater, Thursday through Sunday, October 24 through 27. I was the only person that didn't have to audition. Jeremiah Smallrich reached out to me and said he had the perfect part for me. I get to be a chew-on-your-toe insane asylum patient, so it's, you know, it's part of my resume. Charlie Harper Day. We're going to dedicate four big 8-foot by 12-foot murals in Trader's Alley, Friday evening, October 25. Stockard, I believe, is having a haunted house. I've got you penciled in for Saturday, October 26.
25.
The 20, it's going to be Friday, the 25th?
Yes.
So, we get a double dose, we get to be scared, and see Charlie Harper's murals, right? Okay. The, we're doing something that, we're going to have zombie walks. We are engaging the theater group at Wesleyan College to make people up as zombies, two nights, Monday, October 28, at about 7 o'clock. The kid zombie division will leave, leave the Colonial Theater, cross Main Street, meander down Trader's Alley, and be recognized at Jawbone Park's stage. Gifts, prizes, all that stuff for, and it's, we'll raise a little money, $5 entrance fee and People's Choice Awards and all this good stuff. Trunker Treat is Wednesday, October 30, at 6:00 to 8:00. Halloween Trick-or-treating, we know is Halloween evening, 6:00 to 7:30. November 1, Friday, is the Hocus Pocus Anderson Sisters Show, version two, a follow-up of what they did last year with the costume party being judged the best costume. Ambi was, won the best costume last year.
Of course, this is all you can have.
I've got the photos, anybody that wants to pony up the fee, it'd be extortion, but I've got really good photos. The Stockard Elimination Dinner is at the Event Center, catered by Mr. Rylands, on Friday, November 8, from about 5:00 to about 9:00. And then we don't want to forget about our Veterans Day activities on Monday, November 11. And that's all I have. Does anybody else have anything that could be good to the order? It's 8:08, and I would entertain a motion that we adjourn. Mrs. Albaugh has made the motion, Mr. Rylands has seconded. Discussion on the motion, if not, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. We'll shoot you all back September 5. Thank you all for coming.